You know, review the. Video and the PowerPoint. So Jennifer, you want to start?
Sure, um, my name is Jennifer Lord and I'm one of the attorneys on this class action. Um, settlement against the Michigan Unemployment Insurance Agency. Um, also present today is Michael Pitt, who is the founding partner at Pitt McGee. And we are the firm who filed the lawsuit against the Unemployment Insurance Agency back in twenty fifteen. Also present today is Beth Rivers. She is a partner with the firm as well. And Kevin Carlson, another partner with the firm. We have Bayon Jabar, who is an associate with the firm. And Lisa Simmons, who is co-owner of Analytics Consulting. Who many of you have dealt with in submitting your registration forms, getting your claim forms in. And um, they've been available to answer many of your questions. So throughout this process, um, we have had a lot of people ask us. You know, what is this and why am I here? Um, you are here because you are one of the eight thousand. Approximately two hundred people who were falsely accused of fraud. By the Michigan Unemployment Insurance Agency between twenty thirteen and twenty fifteen. Um, you're here because you had money or property taken from you. And that primarily happened, um, because your tax refunds were seized, your wages were garnished. Or you had unemployment benefits that were cut off. So those are the three primary things that that happened to all of you. And we know this happened to all of you because you show up on a list. That the Unemployment Insurance Agency was was compelled to give us. So um, in the in the end, after eight years of litigating this, um, we took two trips to the Michigan Supreme Court. Uh, this case settled for twenty million dollars. And we just want to talk to you today about how to maximize your recovery. Um, we have a large fund of money that the that the court has ordered us to distribute. And we want to make sure that each of you who were harmed um, by this terrible false accusation of fraud. And all of the things that 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 led to, the bankruptcies, the evictions, um, just just the stress. And um, you know, the the embarrassment of being accused of of committing fraud. Um, so I'm going to turn this over to Kevin Carlson. We we have a relatively short um. PowerPoint presentation. We're going to have several people monitoring the questions um. As best as we can during this presentation. So please submit your questions in writing. Um, we can't hear you. We've got too many people on the call. So um, everyone is muted. But just submit your questions in writing and we will get back to you as soon as we can.
Yeah, thank you, everyone, for taking the time to attend the hardship impact town hall tonight. Um, as Jennifer indicated, the settlement in this case is twenty million dollars. Um, and we are responsible along with analytics. To distribute that settlement money in accordance with the approved settlement plan. Um, that has been entered uh, by the court. Um, there are a few key takeaways that we want you to take away from tonight, if if nothing else. Um, first and foremost is that time it timing is important here. Um, the court has ordered us to submit for final approval. Um, all of the awards and final settlement information. No later than June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-three, which is uh, just over six weeks away. Uh, between six and seven weeks away. And it's therefore very important that if you have a hardship claim. That you would like to make over and above the amount that was garnished or taken from you by the Unemployment Insurance Agency. That you work with us and submit that claim and any information and details needed to support it as soon as possible. Um. The. Second takeaway that we want you to take tonight, if nothing else, is that. We have begun the process of reviewing hardship claim forms for those of you who have already submitted them. And in some instances, the hardship claim forms are uh, completely. Uh, filled out with sufficient factual information that we can use to assign the number of points. That your claim uh, will have in the settlement pool. And for some of some of you, even though you did your best to fill out the form, some of the information has some gaps. Or some missing information and needs to be filled in with greater detail. Okay? We are here between now uh, and the time that the case is submitted to the court. To help you develop your hardship claim form. And someone from our office may be reaching out to you to help you develop your hardship claim form. And we are asking that you continue, as you have done up to this point, to pay attention to your. Uh, email inbox, your phone, your voicemails. You may be getting a call from us, maybe from a number. That you don't recognize. Please check your messages and return our calls and work either with us, with the attorneys at our office. Or the legal assistants will be reaching out to you to help you develop the claim form. Um, we thank you in advance for your cooperation uh, with that. Um, third and finally, in terms of critical takeaways for tonight, is that. By registering your claim for this class action. It's already been confirmed that you're a class member and you've already been informed of what your economic loss was. Your economic loss is the, you know, number, amount of money, number of dollars that was taken. Uh, during the effective period for the class action by the Unemployment Insurance Agency. Tonight is not about the economic loss number. Tonight is about additional money that you can recover. By properly submitting and supporting with facts and evidence and if necessary documents. Your hardship claim form under one of the hardship categories. Because this case settled for as much money as it did. Your potential recovery from the hardship uh, award could be very, very substantial. It could be in the hundreds and the possibly thousands of dollars. And so because there's so much money at stake for you, we want you to. Be mindful and attentive to the deadline. And cooperating with us and working with our staff to develop your hardship claim form. It's our job and your job working together to get you as much money. From the hardship claims as we possibly can, given your facts and circumstances. And again, if you if you work with us and and answer our calls and speak with us probably briefly. And provide us the needed information, we're all very confident that that can that can happen in a timely way. Um. So if you're here tonight, it means that you've already registered, you've been identified as a member of the class. And you've received or will be receiving a personalized economic claim form. That will list the exact amount of money that has been determined you owe. From the economic uh, interception or garnishment of your money. Uh, the next step after that is submitting a hardship claim form. Um, some people have already submitted forms. Forms have been rolling in and we've begun the very early stages. Of reviewing them. Um, and when we started to review them, we started to identify some concerns. And possible confusion uh, in those forms, which is why we wanted to have this town hall tonight. To sort of clear up some of those discrepancies and make sure we began the process of. Fully developing your hardship claims as soon as we possibly could. Uh, Ben, could you hit the next slide, please? Thanks. Um. If you need to find the hardship claim form itself. Um, and the the supplemental questionnaires that you can use to fill in the details of your hardship claim form. You can get them online at the address. WWW dot U I A class action dot com forward slash hardship. We can also mail them to you and you can request that they be mailed to you either by email. Info at U I A class action dot com. Or by calling the number eight three three four three eight five zero two eight. Um, that number is on the screen. Um, it's also on the website. And this recording will also be posted on the website in the event that. You're not sitting somewhere where you can type it out or write it down on a notepad. So don't worry about missing any information here tonight. There'll be plenty of ways for you to go back and get any of the um, the finer points if you need to. So next is step one, um, which is the hardship claim form. Um, that form will ask you to click or uh, check. Or put an X in the boxes of hardship categories for which you qualify based on what you've experienced. Um, we have observed people submitting hardship claim forms. Um, based on what I've seen and what I think my my colleagues have seen. Some people probably check too many boxes. Some people check every box. And some people probably overlook boxes that they might be eligible for, but don't check. Um, and you know, we want to make sure that as you go through the hardship categories. You can identify specifically which ones you need to check and also what types of facts and information you will need to supply. In order to substantiate your hardship claim under each category. Um. The. Different categories have different point amounts corresponding to what you the information you provide. And the the process is the more points that are allocated to your hardship claim. The more uh, money goes to you uh, in connection with your award. Um, so going through the categories. Um. Oh, the the as an overview to the categories. You will be asked to provide information and details. As to why you fit within each category. And we want to provide you with some sort of big picture concepts. That you need to keep in mind when you think about whether the category applies to you. And also how you describe it so that you get as many points as possible. Number one is a concept um, of timing or sequencing. Or you know, the legal terminology for this would be temporal proximity. How close in time is one event to another? And did one event happen before another event? Okay? And so what we are looking for and what you need to provide as best you can under any of the categories. Is a sequence of events and a description of the facts that shows us what happened to you. After the Unemployment Insurance Agency garnished your wages or intercepted your tax. Refund or took some specific action against you um, after March of two thousand fifteen. Um, because as we all know. You know, a lot of surrounding circumstances could be happening in all of our lives. And the unemployment situation could come in in the middle of it and it could make things worse. Than they already were. And what we want to see is how did the unemployment process. Happening when it did contribute to things happening that wouldn't otherwise happen. Or getting worse in a way that they wouldn't otherwise get worse. So sequence and cause and temporal proximity stemming from. The uninsured, uh, I am I am unemployment insurance agency's collection activities. Um, and we hope that that guidance is helpful. Um. So step one, uh, the hardship claim form. So the categories begin with bankruptcy. Um, bankruptcy is a ten point category. Ben, could you hit the next slide for bankruptcy, please? Um, we are personally aware of many of you and many claimants in this class. Who experienced a bankruptcy because the unemployment uh, actions pushed you into bankruptcy. Or because of a host of surrounding circumstances that was then made worse. When the unemployment came into the bankruptcy case and continued to pursue you for what it said. Was your debt to the agency based upon a false allegation of fraud. Okay? Um, if you claim the bankruptcy hardship, some things to keep in mind that would be very helpful to us. Number one, if you have the bankruptcy case number that was assigned to your bankruptcy claim. It would be very helpful. Uh, number two, if you have the bankruptcy petition and the schedule. Um, those would be very helpful. Number three, the name and phone number of your bankruptcy attorney. Would be very helpful. Um, we are able to go into the court electronic docket system. And verify, you know, whether you had a bankruptcy, when it was filed. And whether the Unemployment Insurance Agency filed an appearance and instituted what is called an adversarial proceeding. To contest uh, the debt based on the false fraud allegation. So the number one most important thing, if you have it, would be the case number, followed by any documentation. Regarding the pleadings, the schedule, petition, um, any discharge paperwork and your attorney's name and number. Um, the next one is credit rating decline. Um, the lingering debt from. That's asserted by the Unemployment Insurance Agency and the allegation of fraud. Could have a very bad impact on a negative impact on your credit reports and affecting your credit score. Um. If you pull a credit score now from one of the three credit rating agencies in two thousand twenty-three. It is highly unlikely, if not impossible. That a current snapshot of your credit score and credit rating will show and demonstrate. What the cause and effect relationship was back in two thousand fifteen. And so in this category, we really rely on you to provide as much of the particulars as you possibly can. If you did pull your credit score or your credit rating at that time, or if you were declined. Financing of some kind, a mortgage, a car loan, a lease application, a credit card application. Um, uh, things, things like that at that time. Then that contemporaneous uh, documentation could be very helpful to substantiate your credit rating decline. We know, of course, that not everybody keeps good records going back eight years or longer. And a lot of things have happened, both in the world and in everyone's individual lives. In the past eight years where you might not necessarily have access to that paperwork. And if that's the case, then that's okay. But then it will fall back to providing in writing as specific and detailed the description. Of how your credit rating was impacted. Again, the timing and sequence, cause and effects. Relationship between the U I A activity and the credit rating decline that is best you can describe it. And under this category, if you receive a call from us or if you contact us to provide further information. We will try to have a conversation and ask the kinds of questions that will will gather. More detailed information that will help you on credit rating decline. Um, the next one is divorce. Um. Uh, divorce, of course, is a very um. Uh, complicated uh, subjects when it comes to relationships and causation. Um. Determining cause and effects and identifying any one single cause of a relationship breaking up or divorce occurring. Can be very difficult, but we know firsthand from many clients. That the false accusation of fraud and the corresponding economic impacts and legal. Uh, consequences of that did cause relationships to break up and divorces to occur. Starting in two thousand fifteen, when the actionable timeframe began. Um, in this instance, the more detail you can provide specific to. The Unemployment Insurance Agency, false fraud allegations and related legal proceedings. Financial impacts uh, causing or contributing to. Um, a divorce or breakdown or marital problems, um, the better. Um, we. Uh, are not hopefully asking you to get too personal and divulge things that you don't. Want to revisit or want to share with us. So it helps here in this category if you literally stick to the the basic. Storytelling facts, the who, what, where, when and why sequence of events. And if you had um, a formal, you know, uh, filing of divorce. If it was in Wayne Circuit Court, for example, or Oakland or Washington or Livingston. If there is a case number associated with your divorce with a filing date and an end date for a final judgment. Those uh, timeline dates and times would be very uh, important here as well. To support this hardship claim with that uh, critical information. Uh, the next category is eviction. Um, and many people uh, lost their benefits and were subjected to. A very large debt that they couldn't afford to pay. And attempting to pay it and in combination with losing out on unemployment income caused them to fall behind. Um, their uh, rent payments and be evicted from their uh, their residence. You know, again, a very, a very difficult and painful experience. Um, key things here, again, sequence of events and timing. So the date that you signed the original lease agreement, the address of the residence. The date on which the Unemployment Insurance Agency took the action leading to your eviction. The date of your eviction. Um, the date and the timeline information will be critical in determining cause and effects. Um, if you have documents like a notice of eviction or if there was a court proceeding. Um, relative to your eviction, that document, those documents could also be very helpful. Um, number ten is foreclosure. Uh, again, common thread among all these categories is dates and places. The address of the residence, how long you live there. Um, what was the amount of your uh, mortgage debt at the time of foreclosure? And when did foreclosure proceedings begin and end? In relation to the date of the Unemployment Insurance Agency's actions to uh, take your your money. Or to hit you with penalties that you were forced to uh, try and pay. Um, if you have records, legal records, bank records, correspondences uh, with your mortgage lender. Um, your banker, those could help you locate the the dates. And timing and sequence of the events. It would be very helpful for us to determine if you're eligible under this category as well. Um, the next category. Is impairment of family relationship. Um. A very common scenario that we have heard from folks is that they. Uh. Asked family members for money to assist them with the debt. Or to get by when their um, payments were suspended as a result of the false fraud accusation. Or that their housing situation was strained. Because they were forced to move in with family, increasing tension or or causing conflict in the family relationship. Um, and another one is transportation. Uh, many people had vehicles repossessed or had to. Uh. Voluntarily forfeit their their vehicle, relying on family. Uh, members for transportation and that kind of relationship. That kind of dynamic in a relationship owing family members money, having a family owe you member member own owe you money. Moving into an awkward situation or into close quarters with family members. Or um, having to rely on family members for transportation. Um. We've we've all been there in one at one stage of our lives or another, and this could be a very extreme example of that. And it can cause a lot of tension. Um, and so again, the key here is. When did you have to do those things? How close in time after the Unemployment Insurance Agency started taking action against you? Either legally or in the form of garnishments, tax intercepts, um, income intercepts, things like that. That caused you to uh, have those kinds of family tensions. Um, the list we provided or the examples I just gave are are of course not exclusive. There's a whole range of ways. That a family dynamic can be negatively affected by things like this. And I'm sure that some people out there. Have experienced problems that we can't even imagine, you know, as we just sit here and think about it. So we rely on you to provide the details that we need to make sure that this was caused. And timing happened uh, because of the unemployment activity that is part of the case. Um. The next category is job loss, failure to hire. Again, here, timing, sequence, causation, all those are critical. Um, did you lose a job because you were accused of fraud? Um, you know, thinking off the top of my head, if someone has a job in the military. Either enlisted or civilian, an accusation of fraud can affect your security clearance. Um, it could affect your employment with a law enforcement agency. It could affect your employment with a bank. It could affect your employment with a school. Um, places where being accused of fraud or dishonesty could really directly cause you to lose your job. Um, job loss could also happen because you lose your transportation. Or because you have to move your housing location. Um, or because uh, of a fallout effect of losing a relationship, losing childcare. Being unable to afford childcare, things like that. So again. The who, what, where, why is important. If you have documents relative to job loss, that would be very important to have. Not being hired for a job, losing out on an opportunity is very similar. We would need to know the date that you applied and the date that you were rejected for consideration for a job. Um, relative to when the unemployment activity took place. If you can show that it happened after the collection activity, then you're eligible under this hardship category. Um, loan rejection is the next category. Um, if you were rejected for a for a loan or for some sort of financing, we've kind of gone over this. The key is to show when. Um, if you were rejected for a loan. After the Unemployment Insurance Agency acted against you based on a false false fraud finding. We'll presume that you qualify for this hardship category. If it happened beforehand, the showing is going to be more difficult for you to meet this category. So again, it's critical that you show um, when you were rejected for a loan. In relation to be that being after the Unemployment Agency took action against you. If you have documentation, like a letter formally notifying you of your rejection or the applicant. The rejection of a loan application, uh, that would be very helpful to bolster this claim. Uh, number fourteen is mental health. Um. Some people in the in the forums that I reviewed. Answered this hardship category by saying, um, I didn't seek therapy and I didn't obtain counseling. I wasn't, um, I formally diagnosed or admitted to a doctor's care. Um, that is not necessary in order for you to qualify under the mental health category. Um, if you were diagnosed, the date of the diagnosis would be. Critical. If a healthcare professional or a professional therapist or counselor um, made a determination. That the unemployment activity contributed to your mental health um, issues. Or mental health illnesses, then the date of that diagnosis or that assessment is critical. And if it occurred after the Unemployment Agency took its action, then that will help you qualify for this hardship. Uh, category. Um. We are very sympathetic to. The reality that people endure mental health problems without seeking formal therapy. Or the care of a doctor, uh, psychiatrist, psychologist. And so, um. Don't allow that fact to. Don't allow that fact to dissuade you from applying for a hardship uh award under this category. Um but keep in mind the critical concept of timing and causation. And making some specific showing with your facts and your summary. As to why your mental health uh worsened. After the unemployment agency made its false fraud determination. And acted uh through legal proceedings or through garnishment, tax intercepts uh against you. Uh the next one is repossession of a vehicle or other property. Um. This is very, very common. We expect a lot of people to be eligible for this hardship category, we've already seen many forms. And over the last eight years, we've heard many, many stories of people. Who had to either forfeit or surrender their vehicles because they couldn't make the payments. Um or had their vehicles involuntary repossessed, involuntarily repossessed. Um because of uh not being able to make the payments. Um. If, if that happened to you and you apply into this category. Um it's helpful to let us know the make and model of the vehicle. Um who did you finance it through? Um when did you begin the financing? Um what, what was the amount of the monthly payment on the lease or on the car note? Um when did you fall behind on the payments? It may be that you fell behind on the payments before the unemployment insurance agency started taking your income. But that you could have caught up, right? Um and if that's the case, please explain that. It may also be the case that you've never missed a payment and you were always timely month to month. Until the unemployment insurance agency came along and started garnishing or collecting penalties from you. So the more information you can give us about the sequence and the timeline, uh the better. Uh the next category is a catchall, it's unspecified other. And this is your opportunity to explain to us. Um you know, any other hardships that you can attribute. To the false fraud determination by the unemployment insurance agency. And its uh garnishment or tax interceptor, other collection activities. Um. A lot of people are still uh suffering from. The lingering effects or the direct effects of this problem. Um and again, it's important that your timeline, if possible, begin. In two thousand fifteen. When unemployment started garnishing or collecting against you. And telling us what happened after that point, okay? Um we have seen hardship forms that we need clarification on. That only describe things that happened back in time before two thousand fifteen. And we've also seen hardship forms that describe things that happened, for example, in two thousand twenty. Relative to the complications of pandemic unemployment insurance programs, okay? So it's important for us to kind of link those two. Periods together and find how do we connect the dots between the collection activity in two thousand fifteen? And any ongoing or, you know, continuing hardship that's happened since two thousand fifteen. So please keep that critical date in mind as you describe your own, your other hardships. All right, so next is the hardship claim questionnaire itself. Once you check the boxes. You need to complete a questionnaire that corresponds with each box, so. Each of the categories bankruptcy, repossession. Uh being declined alone or financing. Um marital stress or divorce has a corresponding questionnaire, so if you check that box. In order to accrue points under that hardship category and be awarded money for it. You also need to fill out the hardship claim uh questionnaire. Um please follow those directions as best you can. Um if you have any issues with that. Again, we are making resources available to help you develop your answers to those questionnaires. Um our goal is to make this process um available to you and accessible to you. So that it can be completed and that your final form submitted to us. Um to obtain your award fully reflects all the damages that you've experienced. Um. The. Instructions up to this point. Have asked you not to provide additional documentation unless we ask you to do so. We continue to maintain. That if you can describe your claim with enough detail. We likely will not need documentation from you. But. If you have access to your documents, you should begin gathering them now. Um it benefits you in, in a couple ways. First, it will help you refer to the documents to get the dates that are needed to show timing and causation and sequence. As you write out your narrative or your, your questionnaire form, you can refer to those documents to fill in those facts. Number two, if we do contact you and ask you for documents, you'll have them ready. And there won't be a delay in time uh that would cause you to miss the deadline for some uh submitting your claim. Um. We don't know what types of documentation you might have. And so. We've given some examples of things that you might be looking for. But please don't limit your search through your own documents or boxes or files or whatever you have. To only the examples we provided, if you see a document related to your specific problem, please pull it. And be ready to share it if necessary. Um and finally, going back to one of the, the key points we shared at the very outset of the presentation. Um. If we contact you and ask you to assemble documents, time will be of the essence. So you know, use whatever time you have on now, if possible. To go into your records or to ask whoever might have access to those documents to please get them. So that if you are asked to provide them, there won't be any undue delay. Dan, could you hit up, get the next slide up, please? So. We went through these during the categories, uh during the hardship categories. Um these are just examples. If you select home, home foreclosure. Uh the records of sale or foreclosure or notice of default. If you selected divorce, the complaint uh or petition for divorce. The judgment of divorce, the docket sheet that may you, you or your attorney may have printed out from the court. Reflecting all of the, the filings and dates of events that happened in the divorce litigation. Um repossession of the vehicle, um records regarding the repossessed property, bank records. Um you know, notices of defaulted payments, things like that. Um eviction, um you know, photographs, the notice of eviction. A court judgment, a complaint or default judgment that may have been filed against you notifying you of the proceedings. Um anything, the closer in time to when the U I A uh started impacting you as part of this case, the better. Uh bankruptcy, I would add to this list the case number. Because with the case number, we can access the court record. Um also your schedule, um you know, petition. Um. And uh name of your uh attorney and phone number. Uh mental health would be. Records from your treaters. Um. After the collection activity um and any records of payments or copays that you might have made. To um see those uh treating doctors. Um medical records particularly pertaining to mental health. Are your private and protected medical information. We are not here to insist that you share that with us. If you can detail. The timing and nature and circumstances of your mental health treatment. Please don't feel any need to provide us with all the documentation of it, okay? Um you don't need to subject yourself to that intrusion on your privacy. And we do not want to intrude on your privacy in that way. Um those documents may help you though, provide the details specific to timing. That you need to fall under that hardship category. Um job loss, we talked about earlier. An email or a letter of termination. Or uh you know, a letter informing you that you weren't selected for a job. For which you applied, if it happened close in time or after the U I A collection activity. Then uh we can make a determination that it was at least in part caused by the U I A activity. Um credit rating decline. Um again, difficult to obtain contemporaneous credit records now, eight years after the fact. But if you have something from that period of time. Including anything showing a drop in your credit score, credit rating. This could overlap with being declined, a, a loan, a mortgage application, a lease. Um or with a repossession or a default. Um and so those documents might kind of uh go together in some respects. So check any records you have pertaining to those kinds of activities for. Uh corroborating evidence of credit card or credit rating decline. The next slide, please.
This is the next slide.
Okay, uh loan rejection, the loan rejection letter, email or notice. Um family relationships, you know, again. We don't want to intrude. Or have to see or force you to disclose. You know, each and every text message or email or other communication between you and family members reflecting tension or discord, okay? But you may want to be prepared to rely upon those, that information. To provide a detailed narrative of the what, when and where. Of how the relationship deteriorated after the U I A activity and because of the U I A activity. Um if it's unspecified, use your best judgment. If there are documents or anything that reflect an unspecified loss, you may wish to rely upon that as well. I think that brings us to step three. If you have not already done so. You need to submit a hardship claim and hardship questionnaire supporting each category. Of hardship that you uh you contend applies to your situation. Um. Those can be uploaded through the website portal and the address is here. Uh or by email, the email address on this slide. Or by fax to the fax number. Um it can also be sent by mail uh to the U I A class uh action. Uh claims administrator, which is analytics consulting in Minnesota. Um as we talked about earlier, our deadline for submitting final award paperwork, which is something that the lawyers submit. Uh to the court is due to, to the court by June thirtieth of two thousand twenty-three. Um and that is not very much time between now and then. To make sure that everything here is completed. Um we've begun the work of evaluating these claims. We've begun the work of assigning them to staff in our office who may begin contacting you. Um very soon to help you develop your hardship claims. And we count on you to use the links and addresses and resources that we provided. To also do your homework, to submit as many details as you can in support of your hardship claims. Um. Again, this is not, you know. This is not a um run-of-the-mill average class action. That you, you may get a, an email notice of or a postcard of in the mail. Where you get fifty-nine cents refunded off your credit card uh or your, your cell phone bill in an upcoming month. The dollar amounts that each of you could be eligible for range into the thousands of dollars. For these hardship claims. And because of, you know, the, the substantial amount of money that can be issued under these hardship claims. Um we implore you to work on developing your hardship claims and working with us to help you develop the hardship claims. So that we can make sure you're getting as much of the award as you're possibly eligible for.
Thank, thanks Kevin, um hi everyone, and thanks for taking some time out to. Uh share your, uh share your evening with us, we really appreciate it. Um. A couple of points I want to emphasize is uh Kevin mentioned that. We're talking about potentially thousands of dollars for your award. Uh that, that is realistic. Um there are millions of dollars that we have been ordered by the court to disperse. As part of the hardship claims. And so uh depending on how your claim is evaluated. Uh the award to you uh could very well be in the thousands of dollars. And so it's incumbent upon you to take this very seriously. Please don't procrastinate, we have to submit everything to the court by June thirty. If there's insufficient information about your claim. You, you're probably going to get a low award and that would be unfortunate. Uh so please begin your work immediately. To make sure that we have uh the information that we need. And when, when, and when one of our. Case developers calls you, respond promptly and work with that person. Because that person is, is here to help you, make sure you maximize your award. As Kevin pointed out, this is a point system. People with more points will get more dollars. Uh and it is, it's critical that if you have a claim that we know all the details about it. So that you will maximize your recovery. Uh do not be discouraged if you don't have documents. If you can tell us what happened to you with specificity. Uh you will get a good award. Um the more detail you can share with us, dates, times. Events uh that are relevant to your claim. The, the more likely it is that you're going to get a higher award. Take some time to develop your case. If you don't have documents, that's uh understandable. And we're not going to penalize you because you don't have documents. But we do expect you to tell us with some detail what the basis for your claim is. And um so you know, that's how this is going to work, uh we, we, we do um. Uh do want to make sure that we meet the June thirty deadline. If we meet that June thirty deadline. Uh you and, and the rest of your uh claimants could start receiving payment. Uh in early September. And uh so if you uh. Cooperate with us at, at this point and, and get your information in as soon as possible. We can meet, meet the court deadline and you can begin receiving your awards uh around Labor Day. So uh I'll um turn it over to one of our other colleagues, um Jennifer or Beth, you want to make any closing remarks?
Actually, Michael, can I jump in just for a quick?
Oh yeah, thank you Lisa.
Hi, I'm Lisa Simmons, I'm with the Claim Administration Firm, and we fielded a few questions with people asking about the hardship claim form. And everybody should have received a claim packet in the mail from us. That claim packet includes a copy of your economic loss form. A copy of the hardship claim form that we've discussed on this panel with the checkboxes. As well as instructions on where to go to get those questionnaires on the website. So if you did not receive a claim packet from us in the mail, please contact our office and we can get another one out to you. Either by mail or by email, whatever's most convenient for you. Oh.
Okay.
Thank you, everybody, um. Thank you for sticking with us for these past eight years, we know this has been a long haul for all of you and. We know this has been a long haul for all of you and um we really valued uh. The trust that you provided um in us. We, we've listened to your stories, we really have, we've taken them to heart. Um, we've talked about them amongst ourselves and amongst our colleagues. We're, we're really gratified that we have this twenty million dollars. And we, we just want to see that you, you finally get some relief. Um, from, from this harm that, that you went through. And um, I can tell you that, that our entire team has been, been rooting for you and fighting for you every step of the way. And um, thank you again for putting your trust in us.
Okay, thanks, everybody.
Thanks, everyone.
Yeah, have a good evening.
Bye.
Bye.